Be sure we're online, I didn't hear it.
Yeah.
You heard it over there, okay. Welcome everyone to this evening's council meeting. There are agendas being printed for those publicly in the attendance here. That's correct. We're gonna go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and get started with this. City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session Monday, September 12th, 2022, 6:00 PM. Anamosa Library and Learning Center, 1.0 Roll Call.
Here.
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 Four of six council members are attendants in chambers, which constitutes majority, so we will be holding tonight's council meeting. 2.0 Pledgeable Agents.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have some appear to be newer faces to me in chambers this evening. So those that are looking to address the council on the item or have follow-up comments. I ask that you approach this podium, state your name, and then your business with the council. 3.0 Approval of the Agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. Discussion. Penny?
Crump?
Yes.
Tuchin?
Yes.
Zamba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously, 4.0 Motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings. 4.1, August 22nd, 2022, Regular Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Alan. Further discussion by council on the minutes as they were submitted. Penny?
Tuchin?
Yes.
Zamba?
Yes.
Stowe?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. 5.0 Proclaimations None. 6.0 Introductions. Item 1, House District 66, candidate introduction, Tom Amsler.
He is not able to make it today, he's coming to the next meeting.
Item number 2, Anamosa Rotary.
Good evening, I'm Rayona Evil, for those of you who may not know me. I am the current president of the Anamosa Rotary. Vic Hamery is also here, he is also a member of the Rotary. I want to thank you for having us tonight and letting us talk a little bit about what we have in mind. Anamosa Rotary was established in 1923, which means that next year will be our 100th birthday. That means that there have been 100 years of Anamosa serving the community. Our service, our motto for Rotary is service above self. So we have been almost 100 years serving Anamosa, the surrounding area, and globally. So to celebrate our 100th year, the idea of a centennial project came up. We wanted to do some type of thing that the community could use and appreciate, and that would benefit the community. So in March, we asked the Parks and Rec Board to come to our meeting, Nancy Schaefer was there, and Bruce Mile at least. And they told us about the parks in the area and also some of the future projects for each of those parks. One of the ideas that came up at that time was updating the van shell. Rotary, when we discussed it, thought that would be a very good project for us because it would be something that would benefit the community. And also the shelter that is there was originally built by the Rotary, so it kind of all fits together. Couple of weeks later, we met again with the Parks Board. And we were in agreement, or we decided at that time that that would be a project that we could work on jointly. So at that time, we talked about it and decided that Rotary's part in that would mainly be fundraising. So Rotary District has a grant for $5,000, and that is a matching grant. Because the application was due quite early, we applied for that grant and we received the grant for the project of updating the van shell. It is, as I said, a matching grant, so with that, there would be $10,000 available. Since that time, we've had many conversations with Shelley and the members of the Park Board, including meeting at the van shell to inspect it and see what might need to be done. Besides the grant, Rotary has decided that the net proceeds from our Pumpkin Fest Pancake Breakfast will also go toward the project. And we thought this would give publicity for that project as well as extra dollars. For our part, for Rotary's part, the main thing that we would like is just some recognition when the project is finished, either name a plaque or something on that to just recognize our part of that. So basically, we just wanted the council to be aware of what was going on and kind of get your blessing to go ahead and proceed with the project. And I think when we spoke at the Parks Board the other night, they, the city administrator said that if needed to be, we could do that at a future meeting to get approval. But we, Rotary, would just feel better if we knew that all of you guys were aware of it and that you, we have your blessing to go ahead. So, are there any questions?
I think it's fantastic idea.
We do too.
When I was in my early teens, I was playing in a band, and we actually played in that right there on, underneath that, there was some kind of a swimming meet going on and we entertained everybody that didn't want to watch everybody swim, so it's been there a long time.
Yes, it has been. Did we, Vic, do you remember how long they thought it?
I was born in 1950, so.
Any other questions? So am I seeing an agreement that we can kind of go ahead with this then?
I'm not hearing any objections from council. Let's all just take that we're in agreement that you proceed with any refurbishment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you to the Rotary Club for doing the fundraising, thank you.
7.0 Public Hearing Downtown Revitalization Funds for the Iowa Economic Development Authority. I will call the public hearing to order.
Hi, I'm Tom Gurus, I'm a planner at the East Central Iowa Council of Governments. And I was a grant administrator for the first round of downtown revitalization funds that were used in Anamosa and working with Derek Lundson at Jones County Economic Development on the application for an additional round of downtown revitalization funds for facade improvements downtown. So there's actually kind of two parts to the public hearing that are required as part of the application for the grant. The first is gonna be a fairly rote reading of kind of features of the program. And then, kind of at the end of that, if there's any public comments, we can take them at that time. The other thing that's expected for CDBG grant is a Community Development Housing Needs Assessment, which is expected to be conducted during the hearing. And that's gonna be a little bit more interactive, where it'll be open to comments from council or members of the public to kind of weigh in a little bit. And I do, there's a few things to cover there, and I want to balance input with the, I recognize there's a lot on the agenda. But IEDA does like to see actual public input about the, what the needs of the community are. So I'll get started with just the first part of the hearing, which is again, gonna be just a little bit rote, but I hope you bear with me. Let's see here, as concerned with how the need for proposed activities was identified, it is noted that a building survey determines certain properties within a targeted downtown area as qualified in fair or poor condition are in need of facade improvements. As concerned with how proposed activities will be funded and the source of funds, it is noted that the, with proposed project costs presently estimated to total $1,084,288, grant assistance is being requested from the CDBG program with local match to be provided by the City of Anamosa, amount of $250,000 estimated, but there's a resolution on that later. Plus property owner participation for the residual balance of costs. As concerned with the date, the application will be submitted. It is noted that the CDBG program funding application will be submitted to IEDA by November 1st, 2022. But we're actually planning to get that submitted by the end of the month. That's our goal. As concerned with the request, requested amount of federal funds, it is noted that $650,000 is being requested from the CDBG program with local match to be provided by the City of Anamosa in the amount of $250,000 plus property owner participation for the residual balance of the cost. And as concerned with benefit from federal funding, it is noted that the target area survey has determined the project qualifies for CDBG program funding with a predominance of slum and blighting conditions. And then as concerned with where proposed activities will be conducted, it is noted that downtown revitalization is targeted in an area generally between North Carolina Villa Street and North Huber Street along the north side of Main Street. And then the first four addresses north of Main Street along the east side of North Ford Street. So, and then as concerned with plans to minimize the displacement of persons or businesses as a result of funded activities and plans to assist persons actually displaced, it is noted that no property acquisition is proposed. Therefore, there will be no displacement of persons or businesses as a result of funded activities. And then as concerned with the nature of proposed activities, it is noted that Anamosa's downtown revitalization will principally comprise building facade improvements. So that's kind of all the rote material that I have to read, so if there's any questions, I could respond to those or comments on the project, this is opportunity for that. So now I'm gonna proceed to the Community Development Housing Needs Assessment. And this is the part where IEDA does like to see a little bit more interaction and some feedback from the community about the issues that are important here. So there's kind of three broad areas, so I'm gonna state what those areas are that we need to respond to. And also include a little bit of context for some things that have already been identified in other community efforts. So the first topic that we need to cover is the Community Development and Housing Needs of low to moderate income persons. And I can note from the downtown assessment that was done previously with IEDA and previous Community Development Housing Needs Assessments that have been done for other CDBG applications. Stated goals include increasing and rehabilitating the city's housing stock, particularly at affordable cost for those with low to moderate incomes and seniors who need financial assistance for sustainable, safe, decent, and sanitary living conditions. And then another stated goal was plan and provide for public infrastructure improvements such as water and wastewater projects to help support more affordable taxes and utility rates. So I'm gonna include a couple prompts though, for just a little bit of a discussion. Can anyone, or I can open up to just comments generally on Community Development Housing Needs of Low to Moderate Income Persons? Any general comments? Okay, so I just move on to the prompts, are there housing options for low to moderate income households in the community, both like homeowner, homeowner or rental opportunities?
We, we have participated in a program with a developer to provide a new structure for LMI with the objective to entice it to be a young family. You know, that's not a requirement, that was just our vision. So that way, that fam, young family would be here to stay, children in the school system. So it'd be basically a rooted family.
Okay, so that was LMI Affordable Housing, homeowner?
Don't recall what the actual title of that program was.
Okay. Any other comments? And then are there other needs in the community that might need to be addressed for LMI persons such as transportation, senior needs, recreation, food security?
There is a and what is the, the program that chauffers those in need to, like doctor appointments, jets? So that is within the county, and I believe it is supported financially by the City of Anamosa.
All right, and then the next section kind of restates that a little bit, but it just broadens the scope to general community development and housing needs. So it's not just limited to LMI persons. And some of the previously stated goals from some different activities include increasing rehabilitate the city's housing stock, increase opportunities to market housing, sales and rental opportunities, increase opportunities for the growth of economic development, improve the city's infrastructure, including but not necessarily limited to opportunities for parks and recreation, transportation, and essential public services, enhance business opportunity for the central corridor, with improved transportation for pedestrians and vehicles, public infrastructure and private investments such as Main Street building renovation of facades and interiors, and enhance protection for public security and safety. And then there's a few from the IEDA downtown assessment, which includes establish a building zoning code official, establish a building code and property maintenance code, establish a vacant building registry ordinance, which I understand that's been adopted and will take effect in January of next year. Engage the second story of the buildings by adding housing opportunities, create a development team for downtown improvements, and address downtown parking. So those are kind of the ones I've already documented as stated. So I'll read through a few prompts to see if there's any additional input on community development housing needs. Any input on how you would rate the city's housing stock and what the needs might be for for housing for its residents?
The city, there's a developer that is currently developing a, called a new, new neighborhood within the city on the northeast side. There, there was a partnership between the city and that developer through incentives and debatements. So there's new homes going up. Everything to date has been sold with the exception of the ones that are currently under construction. There are other projects that the city is working on. We do plan to put shovel in the ground on one of an extension from the city to its commercial park, which we anticipate that will also increase the need for residential development in that area. And I know that the property owner, same developer is currently working on a plan to start that.
All right. Okay, so, and I think you've kind of spoken into my next question, just whether there's enough housing for the community, but it, so it sounds like everything that's gone for sale has sold already as a
In that new development.
Okay.
I can't speak for the rest of the community.
Kind of a national issue, I mean, there's
Most places.
Things that come up for sale are
Recently.
Quickly, so we've had a, ever a huge inventory of available homes. I just thought of this, it might not be for this category, but we are partnering, partnering with the program with you guys through Easy Dog for existing homes. Extra improvement, improvements, so that's, that would fit in there somewhere.
Okay, yep.
Say in groups and that sort of thing.
Yeah, actually.
For LMI.
So, yeah, that goes in the next section, which is plan to, plan our potential activities, so we'll get that covered in there. So any needs related to Parks and Recreation?
The second phase of the walking trail is either completed or very close to being completed. That will give connectivity through the state park along, along the, the river area. And then through the community back to a historic bridge that is also incorporated into that walking trail.
All right, and then the next
And in addition to that, I believe there has been discussion of establishing a park on the east side of 151 at some point in time.
Also in talking to the developer, we talked about this trail kind of spider webbing through the city and interconnecting the trails so everybody can, can reach the trail easily.
Okay.
Also in the early phases of connectivity to the two sides of town, specifically a sidewalk from like the fire station area out to east of town.
That's for the trail or that would just be the sidewalk?
That's not the trail, that's just sidewalk.
Sidewalking for trajectory, okay. You said that was on the east side of town?
Yeah.
All right, and then anything else to note in regards to needs for infrastructure?
Drive the city streets, you'll see that there are various projects going on to reestablish our infrastructure.
So
Street improvements, water and wastewater lines.
And I think I can actually get you covered for, I understand you're thinking about an application for a wastewater CDBG grant application too, and I think we can actually get that covered with this, and I say you don't have to repeat the process. So, but that's, so I can just put plan, it's a wastewater treatment plant improvement project, okay? All right, just two more in this section. So are there needs in the community related to economic development?
Can be said about every community, can it?
Probably so, anything like kind of specific that's people have talked about, wanting to see more of? So it sounds like the expansion of a commercial park is one thing that's been planned.
Yes, the connectivity to it.
Okay.
We've done quite a bit in the last couple of years to bring in more commercial businesses.
Okay, and then the last part of this section, any public security or safety concerns?
We have one of the finest law enforcement in the state.
And then, so yeah, and then the last section is just kind of related to plan their potential activities to address housing and community needs, so we've got the housing rehab, we've got the LMI housing development, we've got the project, wastewater project, the various infrastructure, other infrastructure projects you talked about. Anything else that would be worth noting?
There's all sorts of things until you're asked to mention them, and then you can't think of them.
Yeah.
A call on Derek, is there anything that you can provide additional information?
Well, when you're talking about infrastructure, we are putting in a new well to replace an existing.
Spanning the fire department, enlarging, moving the police department to a much larger building, better facility.
And redoing the water treatment to, if I'm right on this, Robert, remove the chlorine and substitute a different kind of system?
Yeah.
Much safer for the employees too, way much safer.
Get all that?
Think so.
And I've already had conversations with Derek and some other entities in town about some parking downtown, different issues that we're looking at, and some assistance with travel, some senior things, it's not developed fully, but I have had meetings on that as well.
Was it earlier this year, Derek, we completed the wayfinding signage, or was that last year?
All right, well, if there's no further comments from the public, that concludes everything that I need for the, for the hearing and the Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
There's no no public comment, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Council discussion.
Yes.
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 Motion to approve closing of the public hearing carried unanimously. 8.0 Old Business, 8.1 Resolution 24-47 authorizing the use of preliminary official statement of the sale of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2022.
We can get the terms lessened by three years, unless they can do without changing our interest rate and everything else that is associated with changing.
Well, I think that three years will work pretty good, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Council discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point two. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three approving a grant application for the downtown revitalization improvement project. Adopting findings required in association with approval of downtown revitalization application. Through the CDBG program of the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Selecting Martin Garner Architecture as the architectural firm and committing a local match from the city in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Further council discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve. Eight point three, resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-four. Designating a portion of the central business district, a slum blighted area with rehabilitation. Conservation redevelopment, development of a combination thereof. Being necessary in the interest of public health, safety or welfare of the residents.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Rich, council discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point four ordinance twenty-two dash nine five four. Adopting the code of ordinances of the city of Anamos, Iowa, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Further council discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Review and approval. Pay application number two to Eastern Iowa Excavating in the amount of. Hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and six cents for Sycamore Street reconstruction.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Teresa. Further discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point six, review and approval. Pay application fire station addition phase seventy-one. Amendment number two to Shive Hattery in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
Elaborate on that a little bit, what's this for?
This is, it just says. Anamos Fire Station Addition Services Provided for August nineteenth, it said the base contract amendment was structural snow load. Is the extra line that's on there. For that, so it was a portion of the professional staff service and the technician. And then having the snow load for the previous part which was added. And then. They have prints that are black and white. They're on there just for ten dollars, fifty cents excluded, but yeah, that's the total amount of the invoice.
So this would fall under. The above and beyond that we approved up to what was fifteen? Where we had this discussion of.
Well, this, this is not the sewer, this says the man structural snow load.
But when we had, we had the, when the agreement. Expired, they wanted additional funds up to. Assuming that that's what this falls under. For additional funds for services?
Yeah, because it looks like all of this is staff. Staff fees and plus a little bit for mileage, and then like she said, the black and white. Prints. Have we paid anything as part of that fifteen thousand yet?
No, we haven't, it's from the last meeting, and then was anything for that, this just looks like.
Well, this would have been since May. Right?
Because the original one was gonna. It was like June thirty, it was gonna.
Well, the original expired, I thought they said January and we. Put it off.
June, and then we pushed to the year, end of the year.
And then project. Right, and then we, we agreed to it in May twenty-third or whatever, so. I don't know if we've paid them anything up to that point, or this point in time since then.
Can we check and see if. Make sure we haven't paid them anything between, from May to now?
Or. For the record, I would like to have a motion to table this.
Oh, I'll move, we table it until we find that piece of information out.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Rich, further discussion. Penny?
Yes.
Yes.
Sunbar?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to table carried unanimous. Eight point seven, review and approval. Pay application number ten to Boomerang Corporation, the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars for the fire station.
To approve.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich, further discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point eight, review and approval pay application amendment number two. Well, number six, construction in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred dollars and four cents to HR Green.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. Further discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Oh.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point nine, review and approval pay application. South Booth Street Amendment Number One in the amount of four thousand, six hundred dollars and five cents to HR Green.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point ten, review and approval pay application water plant. Hypochlorite design in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars to HR Green.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan.
Be, be, may I, you beat me by a lip, so I just went in second.
Further discussion? Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point eleven, review and approval. Pay application for the police station renovation in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars, seventy-four cents. To Martin Garner Architecture.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Discussion.
Only question was. It shows two outstanding invoices from June and May for this project to Martin Garner. Are we paying all at once, or? Is those two total just under ten thousand?
I did. I did check on that and they have confirmed that I look, that are payables and we haven't paid them yet. The outstanding invoices. But that is part of what they're. Getting now. Funds they're receiving now, but I did confirm that as well because I'm like, oh, that's weird, we don't have. And we have a couple of things that are old, but yeah, I looked through our payables and confirmed that they have not been paid.
We're paying the thirty-four, but we'll still have. Six thousand or something, still outstanding?
Balance when they ask for, yeah, the rest of it.
So the nineties, or the ninety-seven, ten, ten thousand, whatever, that, that was a total. Okay. For the project.
The other discussion? Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point twelve, review and approval. Pay application for well number six in the amount of ninety-three thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and eight cents to Boomerang Corporation.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Further discussion? Public comments? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point thirteen, review and approval. Pay application number one for Booth Street. From Eastern Iowa Excavating in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-three cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Teresa. Further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question. Because actually on the. Looks like the letter from HR Green. The pay request number one is for. A hundred and forty thousand, nine twenty thirty.
Yes, on their cover letter it is, when you look at their paperwork though. Over here on the left, which is the second page, it's actually sixty-three. So I did send him an email to say, hey, cover letter.
Okay.
Was off, but yeah, on the actual application certification for payment. The change is the correct amount, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, questions? Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point fourteen, review and approval. Pay application for state pin pre-treatment agreement renewal in the amount of. One thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars to HR Green.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. A little discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point fifteen, review and approval change order number one. To establish a unit price for crushed stone. Backfill material for the Boo Street project. Discussion. Believe this is due to the. Bed area that the new structural lay-in was not solid.
There's too much soil underneath there when they were digging it up or what?
I don't remember what their finding was. Just that. This fill was required to stabilize it. So it had to come about in the change order because it was undetected, which it.
What was the?
Wouldn't have been until you.
You don't know what the base soil was, was it sandy or something, or?
Steve, could you maybe fill some gaps in on this?
Steve Agnes Utility Superintendent, there was a spot up there on First Street that. When they dug it down, it was really muddy. So they wanted to put rock in. To stabilize the area, to put the water main back in, so.
Do you know, has that occurred already?
I don't know, Josh, yes. Yes, it has.
Just kind of curious as all.
Next to.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. Council discussion. Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimous. Well, we made it through the old business. Nine point zero, new business, nine point one, discussion and possible action. CDBG Downtown Revitalization.
The reason I have this on the agenda is I figured since he was here, if you guys had any questions furthermore than just the public hearing. And anything, while he was available. We can ask him since he's here, if we don't have anything that we need to work on or. Further instruction, but I figured there was an opportunity since you had.
Tom, with this being phase two for us, I guess we would. Figure this would roll through as smoothly as phase one, even though we have additional, more participants. From the downtown business property sector.
Yeah, I would hope so, so you know, anytime the applications are submitted, it's probably going to bend on. How many other communities you're competing against, but. Certainly in our favor, I think is how quickly we work through the. Project in the first round, because usually the grants are. Awarded for a three-year period and we've completed it and. Just under two, I think, basically. So I, I think that's kind of a. Execution schedule that's pretty, not very common from some other communities that I've talked to, so. Yeah, we've got the experience with the, with Derek, who's done a number of projects and. Now I've gone through the whole cycle for one whole program, so. IEDA knows that we're capable certainly, so.
Yeah, I was just, I was also going to comment, you know, the reason, one of the reasons for expeditiously was Derek. Keeping his finger on that pulse throughout the project and. Just kind of kept it for, moving along. And the contractors were sensational to work with.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I had a, yeah, good working experience with them too, so, you know, and obviously. It's public bidding, so we can't guarantee that they get it the second time, but. For this project, yeah, they were. Yeah, pretty on top of the project and especially with the. Part I have to deal with, which is the, probably the least fun part of it, the Davis Bacon reporting requirements, they were, I had a partner there. Was able to get paperwork into me pretty quickly and get any issues resolved. Without too much trouble.
Thanks, we'll be optimistic.
Thank you.
So, Michelle, then we looking for a. So, Michelle, then are we looking for a motion to move this forward? Or was this just the discussion?
Just for discussion, correct, just for discussion. We, we already kind of approved the other item, so yeah, we know to move forward. I just wanted to make sure. The thing that he had me to say the stuff was more formal.
You're good with this route? All right, thank you. Uh, nine point one, there'd be no action this time. Nine point two, discussion of possible action. Noise street closure permit for arts court.
They're looking just to close their parking lot, but it will be a noise issue and just to make sure police know there'll be people gathering in the parking lot.
No action required?
This will require approval.
Yeah, move to approve.
Alan, second by Teresa.
I might be down here yelling and screaming, so I want to prove it.
Further discussion? Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash nine five five, amending chapter twenty-two. Library Board of Trustees of the Code of Ordinances. Possible motion to waive three readings requirement of Iowa Code. Three eight zero point three and place the following ordinance on its final passage for adoption.
This is updating the name uh, in our ordinance for the library. Um, it's just been Animalso Library this whole time, and since we've had the new building, um, we need to get. Now, but we need to update the name to the Library and Learning Center officially. Uh, in our ordinance, so we don't have to read it three times, we're not really changing anything other than just making a name update, so as long as we. Uh, when the motion's made and say we, you know, are going to go through readings this time.
Move to waive and, and accept the new name.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. Further council discussion? Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Nine point four, resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-nine. Request abatement of incurred property taxes on property owed by the City of Animalso. For public persons, purposes within the city limits of the City of Animalso. Could you give a brief explanation on this?
Yes, so, um. We have three properties that the city owns. That have come into our possession in the last couple of years and we're getting top. Tax property taxes on that and the city should not be taxed, but it takes a couple of years to have them take it off since we are a tax-free entity. So we have to request a resolution to confirm that and then I present it to the county to have them abate the taxes, so we won't actually go. And she's hoping next year it'll be up, but if they don't have it processed by then, then we'll have to do it again next year. So the addresses um, are two oh one West Walnut, one oh eight North Ford and three oh six North Davis and the tax ID property.
Move to approve second.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff.
That's not my name.
I thought I heard Jeff.
You, you, you beat me to it.
I've been called worse.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Any further discussion? Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Nine point five, resolution twenty twenty-two dash five zero. Approving the hiring and setting salary for current open positions for fiscal year ending June twentieth, twenty twenty-three to employees. Michelle, would you state those positions?
Yep, um, so L C C is looking at a part-time uh, position for an attendant. Uh, her name is Heather Briggs and then um, at City Hall, uh, we have selected for Deputy Secretary Brandon Schrader. Um, for that position, um, and so the ones to open positions we have right now that can be fillable and those. Discussion about this.
Can we amend this resolution? Cause I see that you've got in here. The following hires be approved with an effective date of September twelfth, twenty oh two.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll, I'll make the motion to approve with that amendment.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Any further discussion? Personnel matters, so I won't ask for public comment. Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion carried, motion to approve carried unanimously. Nine point six, resolution twenty twenty-two dash five one. Implement to move forward with purchase of certain real property.
Um, the background is on this particular one, uh, there's an alley in town that is actually owned by the. Uh, property owners that we have been plowing and taking care of um, for quite a while. We need to uh, make some improvements. At that location, um, so we are uh, need to move their property line from the middle of the alley. The other side of the alley, so it's a square foot package price, depending on how much square footage they have at the alley. Um, and we would have to get signatures on the documentation. Uh, from the residents to approve the changing um, from the middle of the alley to the side of the alley. Uh, each property, um, the addresses are listed there for the block that it entails. Um. And then we'd work on that process through the winter, so then when spring comes, we'll be able to make the necessary improvements.
Has there been contact with the uh, owner?
We have not contacted the owner yet because I wanted the permission of, from you guys to go forward and contact the owner.
Okay.
It's all out.
I move, we go forward with that project.
Sounds okay.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. Am I hearing you that it's currently in possess and private sector's possession?
We have been responsible for it the entire time, but when we went to go look at updating the infrastructure. We came to find out that the whole alley is. The property lines are actually to the middle of the alley. Or all the properties along the streets that we have on that.
That's recorded that way?
If, if you look at Beacon, at the property lines, it will go. Either to the middle or even over to the other side in some areas. It zigzags up and down the alley.
Cause it's older neighborhoods, there's a lot of things that are weird.
Like, yeah.
Like, it's, I'm just, I'm looking for clarification for myself. This is privately owned. It's going to become city property.
Technically, legally, yes, it is privately owned and the city's been maintained.
For, for practical purpose, I would call it, it's, it's a city alley.
It is a silly.
It is.
Yeah, it's, it's been viewed as a city alley. The only reason we found out about it is because we're looking at doing infrastructure updates. And when we looked at the legals and they were doing the research for the infrastructure updates, it was realized that. Public right of. Do you want to add anything else saying about it or Steve?
Steve Agnes Utilities Director, so basically what started was this, we need to replace the sewer, which runs up the alley. And when I approached H R Green to do that, when they did the research, like Michelle said, that's when they found out that the city technically didn't own the alley. And there's no easement, no nothing for the sewer, so we had to do this.
So it is now going to become property.
It will, yes.
And it will remain property of the city.
Yes.
Something a year from now will sell back to it.
No, no, but legally we have to move it out of the street or the alley technically to the sides of the alley. Or their property.
So it's not going to be an easement, it's going to be a lot of deeds transferring through the county.
Correct, I think there's almost twenty homes or something and I listed all of them on the addresses and person number.
Thanks, Steve. Do you, do you know off the top of your head that, didn't that sewer run through the. Build lumberyard property?
Yes, yes, it does.
That's included on the, on the.
Uh, I think.
I don't, I just thought of that.
Not for sure.
I don't think that's, I think this is just all the.
I think this is.
Alley.
Above, we, we, I don't think we've got to the, the church yet and.
Cause that continues on down through the alley.
And, and through McCoca de Value Valley's uh, pole yard.
It's not going to be done at this time, just.
No, that's coming, we just, this is the worst part of it.
So we'll have to address that.
Yes.
In the near future.
Yes.
But since we have to get a hold of approximately twenty homes through the winter, it's easier to start that process now and talk to the homeowners.
I've already talked to McCoca de Valley, they're on board, they're just waiting for us to get our stuff together, so.
Any other questions? Council, public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Nine point seven, resolution twenty twenty-two dash five five. Utilities to purchase a used twenty thirteen Ford crane truck and seven drawer toolbox.
Questions?
The item was budgeted, um, we had a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the budget, uh, we had come in under budget. Um, on that for the used truck, um, a new truck is about fifty thousand.
It's a hundred and seventy-five for a new one.
It's about sixty thousand, sixty five thousand new. We don't necessarily need new, this has low mileage on it.
Toolbox to be mounted.
To, so, so what the toolbox is, is it's just an open utility bed, you know, with the utility boxes on it. And they have a good toolbox that'll fit in one of the side doors, so then we don't have our sockets mixed up with the wrenches and, you know. Organization of the tools and easier accountability and for the employees to find them, so.
Maybe it's in here about, see how many miles are on this?
Seventy thousand. Robert and I went last week, Wednesday to look at it. The only thing that we can see is it needs a one tire. So.
Plan to sell the ninety-nine, yeah?
Yes, I, I figured once we got the new one set up and running, uh, we'd take it down to the Highway sixty-four auctions, like we've done with some of the other stuff and. Have them sell it.
What are some projects that you know of that would require the upgrade of this?
So currently, right now, there is seven pumps that I have in the wastewater system that I cannot pull. Because the truck is not big enough, the current truck. The current truck has a thirty-two hundred pound lift capacity on the crane. This one is six thousand. Um, there's three pumps down here at Second Street Lift Station. I can't pull them. Because the truck won't handle it, so then I have to call Mississippi Valley Pump. To do, and that's seven hundred and fifty dollars every time. If I just need to pull it because I think it's got a rag in it. Then I, then we can take it, we can do it ourselves. Same with the four pumps in the influence pumping station at the plant. That's, that's things that we'll do, well then we'll be able to save that seven hundred and fifty dollars just to have them come and, you know, get rags or debris out of the pumps. Um, with also with, you know, so we bought the mini last year, so we've been doing some fire hydrants, we've been doing some uh. Valves in the street, so we're using the crane truck to put that stuff in, because it's a little easier to control than it is with the excavator. To set that stuff in place and hold it in place. So we're using the truck. A lot more than what it was prior to me showing up, so.
Good deal.
So we figured this looks like it's a good fit, it runs good, it's in really good shape. It'll last us a long time.
It's not like you're driving to Des Moines and back every day.
Correct, correct. You know, about once a month, we'll have to take it out on the interstate just to get the cobwebs knocked out of it, just, you know. Instead of putting it around town. So.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. Further discussion? Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Nine point eight, review and approval. Change order quote for downspouts at Fire Department Edition. What's that total?
Uh, sixteen thousand, thirty-two dollars and nineteen cents. Said they proposed to add eight hundred L F of eight-inch A B S to group. The six new and one existing downspouts together to two groups and discharge them to the northwest of the tree. At the base of grading with one load to rip wrap and fuse the waterfall.
This is not a recommendation by. The architect.
Once they worked on the fire department and they realized the downspouts are basically only halfway down the building and no one really addressed. That part of it for some reason, so uh, it is a change order because to get it to go.
So, so the design was not a complete, is that? Kind of what I'm taking away from that?
Or is this on existing?
This is on the newer building. Um, that they have so far, the downspouts only come down halfway. I unfortunately was not here at the beginning of this to know, but from the. Walk around that I had, they did not come down to the ground. They're about four feet off of the ground right now.
You see, I, I, we don't have them in front of us, but it would be nice to know what those plans. Were.
From the original plans or what they're thinking now?
What the original plans were that we approved. If, if they were four feet. Intended to be four feet above the lay of the ground, uh.
Why?
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 And. It was, I thought when I read through this, it was the. Contractor that had proposed this, not the architect.
Not sure who proposed it. I just received the tour so they could physically show me that they stopped that, it's not the building wall.
Well, I mean, the request for change is coming from Boomerang, but. Still, it should have been in the plans.
I will verify that if you guys want to uh, request to table it and I'll verify and put it on the next agenda.
I'm gonna give this one to Jeff, I heard you as well.
I didn't want to make you feel bad.
So I have a motion by Jeff, do I have a second by?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to table carried unanimous. Nine point nine, review and approval, approval. Liquor license for Thou Art Gallery LLC, new class C.
So.
To approve.
Okay, this is back on the agenda. I had it listed last month as a renew and it's a new, and then she realized that she only went with mine only. Why not? So she changed her class, so I still had to bring it back anyway for approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. I would imagine the documentation flows right along with that.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Penny?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Nine point ten, review and approval. Comprehensive plan to be prepared by E C cog.
Um, so this is part of, oh, you can come up, just gonna give a little background. So we need to update the comprehensive plan. Um, I have a quote that's in all your packets, I don't know if you've looked at all of it. It's approximately uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. It takes about ten months. They can start around January, the whole entire process, um, just to kind of give you a nutshell of what they're looking at for that. And we have it updated probably over a number of. And we have it updated probably over a number of weeks, but we have next calendar year.
Yep, Tom Gurus from EC cog again, um, uh, when I'm not doing CDPG stuff, I like to do a little planning too, so. Um, yeah, we, uh, Michonne provided a, yeah, a pretty good summary of, um, uh, the process. I think we've got a little bit longer timeline, like, uh, but so by the end of the year, next year by, uh, December, um, so roughly a, a year after we, um, once we get started in January is what we've proposed. And, um, I'll just provide a little bit of information about the, uh, kind of the purpose of the comprehensive plan on the, um, like, it's about the fourth page of our proposal, there's the, uh, performance alignment, um, which shows some different, uh, planning activities that cities will typically engage in, um, and that kind of goes from uh, long-term, uh, visioning documents, kind of at the, uh, I'll say top of the list, it's, everything's kind of, I see is kind of essential. Um, so it's not really a hierarchy. Um, so at the top of the list are, are plans that are, um, gonna be a little bit more general, but they're visioning, um, exercises for, uh, what you like the community to, to look like in the future, um, and then, uh, uh, is it gonna be a little bit longer term, uh, than some of the plans that are the, at the bottom of the list, which are gonna be a little bit shorter term and have some more specific goals? Um, and, and maybe some like funding i- identified in them. Um, so really, the, they all, uh, work together to move the community forward, uh, but have a little bit different purpose. Um, in a city like, uh, Anamosa, uh, where there's zoning, um, uh, comprehensive plan is, uh, requirement. Um, and the, uh, zoning and subdivision, uh, ordinances and then any decisions, uh, made by your Board of Adjustment or the recommendations that come from your Planning and Zoning Commission should also be based on your comprehensive plan. Um, so that's why it's a good thing to have that updated and I understand, um, uh, it's probably been at least twenty years for the existing plan. Um, and actually, our recommendation, even though they, we kind of build them as like twenty-year visioning documents, um, we would actually recommend updating them like every, uh, ten years, um, because a, an awful lot can change in the community. Um, and one of the big components of the planning process, uh, would be the public engagement. Where we would really try to, um, engage with as much of the public as possible for, uh, input, um, in order to um, have that be a strong component of the, uh, goals and rec, um, goals and objectives, uh, that, uh, come out of the plan. Uh, so kind of generally what the planning process would be, uh, would be just starting with the community introduction, um, uh, meeting with the Plan Steering Committee. Um, alternatively, that could just be the Planning and Zoning Commission that we could work with for direction on the plan. Uh, but a steering committee, um, can provide a little bit more diverse, uh, background, depending on who you ask to be on that committee. Um, and then getting started with some stakeholder, uh, interviews, um, so it's, which could be like, business leaders in the community, elected officials, um, city staff. Uh, then we'd move into information gathering phase, which would be the public engagement, uh, that I discuss, and we'd be going to other sources too, um, to try to provide information about, um, both like what are the current conditions of the community, uh, and then trying to get um, information from the community about, uh, where they'd like to see the community going. Once we have that information, um, we would use that to, uh, build our, uh, goals and objectives, um, that'd be the analysis and strategy formation. Um, so that would really be based on the data to inform the plan. Um, and then the final step, uh, after we've developed, um, some kind of draft goals and objectives would be to, um, uh, kind of finalize that list and do a prioritization of those, um, for like what needs to be addressed in the near ter- term versus some of the things that could kind of be uh, put off until like an opportunity a- arises to address those, um, and then the final step in the process would be, uh, final review and adoption. Um, one thing I would like to add to about the, uh, uh, community engagement, uh, portion of the planning process is that anymore we really try to, um, kind of duplicate all of our efforts that we do, um, in person, uh, online and, and vice versa, so a lot of times we'd like to have, uh, community, um, survey that residents can fill out, um, which is a great way to, as long as you can get good participation to get a lot of, uh, feedback pretty quickly from a large number of people, um, and we have a uh, tool that we use, uh, that's, uh, set up online that would, uh, have a project page, um, to kind of go over uh, where we are in the process and talk about opportunities for, um, residents to, uh, show up to, uh, provide their public in, input. And then, um, things like the survey would be made available online, um, but we also don't want to leave out anyone who is not um, able to participate on a computer, so we would have paper copies available. Um, so again, there's a lot of the steps that we take for that public engagement, um, w- we like to have in-person opportunities and then also set up opportunities, uh, where people can um, participate even if they're not able to make, uh, a public meeting. So. Um, uh, so that's kind of a, kind of broad overview of, uh, comprehensive planning, like why it's important and, um, what the process would be. Um, that, yeah, there is definitely some room for kind of, uh, adjusting and fine, fine tuning the um, development of the plan with the, uh, Plan Steering Committee. And so are there any questions about the proposal? Okay. Well, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Look forward to that comprehensive plan and putting it compiling, put it all together. Uh, it's very important because it can become a roadmap for a city uh, to, for the vision today versus what you possibly foresee ten to twenty years down the road, so.
Y- yeah, so, and I, uh, would actually be really excited about working with Anamosa with everything you've discussed today, um, that the, the city is, uh, trying to do in terms of, uh, providing more housing opportunities and, um, economic revitalization, or downtown revitalization and economic development, uh, there's a lot going on, um, and the comprehensive plan, um, you know, that in- informs your like future, uh, land use, um, requirements, um, and one of the great things about that too is the amount of, uh, input we try to get from the community to kind of help, um, inform that because some of the other uh, planning activities that I mentioned on that list, uh, would typically not include as much public input, so, um, that's kind of an exciting thing too, where it gives the elected leadership, uh, kind of a point in time where like this is the input that we receive from our residents about what, what's important to them.
Rest and see it.
Thank you.
It's your action here we need to take.
Um, yeah, if somebody, uh, wants to discuss a little more, but if you want to just kind of, um, say that we're willing to move forward, I think, then we can do what we have to do with any of the paperwork or resolutions at that point, if that's something you guys are interested in, just having them develop that plan for us.
I'll make a motion to proceed, my second.
Motion by Jeff, excuse me, motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Further discussion? Public comment? Penny?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve, here unanimously, nine point eleven, review and discussion, minimum property maintenance ordinance, discussion and building codes policies.
Um, the reason this is before you is I have, uh, had multiple discussions with some of the engineers and the city attorney. We don't actually have anything, we've adopted general standards that kind of a lot of the places in Iowa use. Um, I don't know if you all read the memo or not, I don't want to go down the huge rabbit hole of all the things we can do. Minimally, we should look at adopting SUDAS, um, which is S U D A S. Um, they have, uh, design standards for public infrastructure, for road sidewalks, sewers, water mains, parking lot, et cetera. So if there's a development that's going in town and we have adopted SUDAS as our standard procedure, they will know that they will be required to put in storm drains and different things. Um, if we don't have the same standards in place, if somebody doesn't do that or has it in their proposed plan and we miss it, we really don't have any way to force them to make sure that there's real infrastructure in place. So at a minimum, we should look at that. I don't know if we want to look at international building code additionally. Um, also in the packet was even, even updating, uh, some things for our sidewalk ordinance that the city attorney recommended. There's actually about six different property codes that we could, depending on how strict we wanted to enforce. Um, of course, the stricter we get and more difficult it'll be because we'll have our code officers enforcing a lot of it, but, um, and I don't know if we just want to maybe start with SUDAS, just to make sure that infrastructure's good for developments, um, and it has regular standards. I don't know if we want to, uh, I think previously you guys talked about, um, maybe six months or a year ago about the international uh, property maintenance code standards, um. So I, I don't know at what point, wanna pursue which part of it, if you want to talk about the sidewalk, if you don't want to talk about the sidewalk, or just kind of move forward with the SUDAS in general, at least we have something in books that's standardized that way.
Well, I, I guess I would like to see us do the SUDAS in the sidewalks, at least to start with.
I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Make a motion.
SUDAS with just pertaining to sidewalks for right now?
No, the SUDAS with, for the sewer and the, and that.
So everything SUDAS.
And then also looking at the sidewalks as an additional specific, um, code.
You're asking to look into it, not to adopt anything at this point?
Well, I don't think it's on here to adopt.
Not adopting yet, so once, if, once you guys kind of look at the cafeteria plan for what we kind of want to look at, then I can go back and do what I have to do to get the SUDAS paperwork, and then we'll have three readings of sidewalk to update for what the attorney said that we should update, and then we'll go forward with that point, but at least we have a resolution coming up and ordinance coming up to at least do those standards. And then we can, you know, a couple of months from now or six months or in the spring, look at maybe other things if we want to.
I mean, it's probably an easy place to start, but like the, the newer subdivisions are probably not a lot of issue, issues there, a lot more of our issues are in the older homes, you know, where we've had piggybacking and and those are harder to address. I don't know how much we're gonna find on the infrastructure on a new subdivision, with as far as water and sewer.
Well, but like she said, if you don't have the code.
Yeah, I know you can start somewhere, I'm just.
Right.
You're probably not gonna find a lot on a new, it, more of the issues are probably gonna be in old, you know, older neighborhoods.
More than likely.
And shared lines and.
We want to have some kind of a code, I don't.
It's somewhere to start, I guess.
I don't believe we should get overly strict, it, uh, it creates more problems than it solves sometimes, but I think we gotta be, just be aware of things that need to be, uh, held accountable.
Yeah, well, but i- if I'm reading this right, the, what you're talking about, the piggybacking, Jeff, doesn't fall under SUDAS anyway, because this is, the way I'm reading this, this is just the public infrastructure portion of it, not the homeowner's line.
I think it's a good place to start.
Yeah, we, we've got to start someplace and then we can.
We can always change it or tweak it a little bit, make it work for us.
But the sidewalks definitely, because we have sidewalks with issues.
Right.
And have been for a long time.
Well, and wasn't HR Green going to weren't, wasn't that part of the deal with them, they were.
They were supposedly supposed to be assessing it, weren't they?
Well, they were gonna help assess, and I thought they were gonna write the, a policy or help write a policy or.
Have you heard anything from them since you started about the sidewalks?
Not from them about the sidewalks, unless this maybe what, I don't know if Jeremiah maybe got it before and forwarded to the attorney, and this is what he's recommending, saying yes, he agrees. I'm not sure, I just know that the update for the sidewalks that's in the packet was, was sent to me from the attorney. I don't know if he decided to make the changes or if it was from them, then he's probably, I'm not sure.
Have HR agree here, could you do the sidewalk?
I, I did not personally.
Do you know anything about it?
Or, or, or do you make sure you can tell? Sorry.
Um, Josh Campbell and HR Green, I did check with the engineer working on the sidewalk, and that is, I think, later this week, if not early next, to get more information on specifically what you're talking about with the ordinance. So I think, I don't know exactly where, what information Michonne has, but I think it's part of our overall project.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you want to give direction for me to work on the SUDAS and the sidewalks, then I work with them and have more definitive information, meaning kind of compare what the attorney has and everything.
Sounds good to me.
I think it's a good starting point.
Yeah.
We have a motion to move forward with this review?
Uh, no motion.
Just discussion.
It was just discussion.
All right. Discussion, nine point twelve, discussion of possible action. Chapter ninety-two point zero nine, security deposit.
Um, so the background of this, um, we have, uh, utility accounts, um, the security deposit that we take for all the accounts in town um, need to be, uh, refunded basically within a twelve-month period, as long as the people that are living at the property are paying on time, um, and promptly. Um, and we have, uh, been originally holding them, uh, for their last bill, basically. Um, but since the original deposit was created, uh, for the ordinance, um, the state has created what's called income offset, so if any city is owed funds, we can file a claim against their taxes with the state, um, to get it refunded to us, uh, for any refund they may receive, um, if we don't get a final bill payment. Um, also, the auditors have commented that we should be returning them within twelve months of consecutive on-time payment. So, um, that's one thing that we will be looking at doing, uh, probably by January, and what that'll be is just a credit on the account for the customer, we're not writing checks to anybody or anything else. Um, also, ordinance, uh, does not state that we have to do any, uh, interest or anything, because we're a home world city for our size. Um, so it'd just be whatever they paid goes directly on their account as a credit, to everybody caught up. Um, the other thing we can talk about, or you guys can talk about, is if we even want to do security deposits, since the income offset is in place, um, we could completely remove it from the ordinance and just take that part out, where we don't necessarily need a security deposit from anyone, and they can just have services, because we already have things in place that if they're late and don't pay, there are shut-off procedures and they have to kind of be current anyways, not like anybody's gonna uh, run up a huge bill otherwise, as long as we're following standard procedures. So, one thing would be just kind of giving heads up to returning the security deposits, and then if they would like to keep them in the ordinance or not. It is extra steps for us to make sure that we keep track of all of that, but with the state, uh, saying it should be twelve months and our auditor saying it should be twelve months, we'll get at least caught up.
I guess most people in, in town are gonna be getting a credit back, you know, I mean, except for the, the, the new, the new people within twelve months, everybody else will get a credit back.
Correct, so what I was hoping to do is refund all of the people that were twenty-twenty-one and sooner or credit on their account, and then all the twenty-twenty-two people, so then when the January people come up, we'll re, we'll put a credit back in February, or, you know, March, that kind of stuff, we'll just do it the next month for anybody that opened an account, so we'll be current within twelve months. Um, unless you guys want to have a discussion about completely removing the deposit, if we completely remove the deposit, then in January, just everybody get a credit back on the deposit on their account, we wouldn't have to collect it anymore effective January first or something.
But we can, but if they did the hundred-dollar deposit and they don't pay, we can, we can pull from that, and they just don't get it back, right? That's how it would be set up. If somebody pays their deposit, they don't pay for X number of months, within that twelve-month period, we would just pull that, and then they wouldn't get their deposit back?
They wouldn't get the deposit back until they leave, or they pay twelve consecutive months on time.
I'm saying, but like I say, you have somebody in one, three, four, five, that's, doesn't pay.
Correct.
And we take from that to pay their bill, and then they start paying again, when, when they hit that twelve-month period, or when they've been twelve months of pain, they don't get it back then because we had to, they, they weren't current, we had to pull from that. Is that how it would be set up?
No, we don't get to keep anybody's deposit. At some point, we will have to return, that's why I'm saying it's just easier almost to get rid of it.
I, I think what Jeff's saying is, like, in the third month, if they haven't paid their bill, you take the deposit money to pay the bill. You take the deposit money to pay the bill. To pay the bills, so, so they've already, already expended their deposit money.
They're not going to get any more though. They've already.
Right, gotten it, basically.
About the only thing it's good for is a transient type person moving in, living in a, in a place, renting for a couple of months and deciding that, that Jesus leave. Otherwise, most people who come in are, are going to be paying their bill. They're going to be permanent. I can't, that's the only reason we would want to have it at all.
We've had it for a very long time.
And, and I guess the question is, over all that time, have we ever taken somebody's deposit to pay their bill? Or do we just keep it sitting in the account?
It's been sitting in the account, which is why the auditors and the state said, no, I guess you look at that. So minimumly.
In Jeff's example, we would not utilize that deposit money anyway.
So if we can't even use it in that situation.
Use it to credit and cover a bit if they were short.
So it's really.
The purpose of the deposit then all this time?
Well, many years ago, we didn't have a means if somebody skipped out on a final bill to get it back. And then kind of I think cities or counties or government entities complained to the state and then they created this income offset. So if somebody has some kind of claim, whether it's utility or tax or something, they can file it with the state and then if they are do. A state refund that'll collect against us.
So this is just an irritant for the office down there.
Yes. To be honest. We have a fund for it. We could close the fund and the auditors are looking at it all the time, you know. When they do the review and since we're not doing anything with it, it's just literally sitting there.
And, and I'm going to guess odds are if somebody's going to skip, their bill's going to be a lot more than a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yes, or we've already turned them off, you know, for not paying anyway, so.
My only thought is, so you say it would go against the property taxes, which if it's, if it's a, someone renting. Then it's going to go against the owner, not the, the person renting. Is that how it is currently?
I'm not sure on that part, but I would generally say in most of the places I've ever dealt with. If you own a property and you decide to rent it, it's a risk for renting it. Most places, if they have somebody renting, they usually take a security deposit. When somebody moves out, they can call the office and say, hey, do they owe any money before they refund their security deposit?
We've had that conversation about a year ago with rental property owners.
Yeah, that, that's what should be taking place. And if the, if the rental. Company or the owner, whoever is renting, doesn't call and say, hey, do they owe anything? That is their property. They're responsible for it to take it out of the security deposit. That's on them as well.
Sounds like we should just discontinue this. Is that your feeling?
I, yes, I would prefer to completely discontinue it and then just refund everybody, credit everybody in January and then we're done this year.
We need a motion for this, Mayor.
It says possible action.
I move that we just continue this process.
Now, second that.
Motion by Allen, second by Rich. Any further council discussion?
And I assume the software will, if their, if their bill isn't, if it's less than a hundred dollars, they'll just get it until that, that credit is.
Correct. So it might be a month and a half or two months or however long till the credit. Not a long one situation.
Any public comment?
And then I'll, I'll have an ordinance that'll be removing it, so.
Yes.
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 Yes, again.
You said yes for me. I'm.
Mayor confused me.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Nine point thirteen, review and approval of current bills.
Second.
Motion by Allen, second by Rich. Discussion on the bills that are in front of us.
Yes.
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 Motion to approve carried unanimous. Ten point zero, city administrators report.
I'm not having anything separately to report at this time. I've been busy putting together the two hundred twenty page. And going to pumpkin fest. Been very busy. We've been very productive in the office.
Any questions for Sean?
Does the new hire start tomorrow then?
He will start Monday.
Mondays, okay.
If anybody wants to come in, they'll be overwhelmed as is, so it might as well get everybody's name.
Eleven point zero, mayor and council reports. Eleven point one, mayor's report. Do report at this time. Eleven point two, council reports.
Just for the parks and rec. The Rotary already touched on the band shelf, so I don't have to report on that. The fencing for the Monroe courts down by the park down there should be in in the next few weeks and they'll get those installed and the courts painted. And the courts over at Saint Pat's will be resurfaced yet this fall and then painted in the spring.
See that Indian activity there. Thanks. Anyone else? Twelve point zero, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Tom Bergen, downtown property owner. Just want to give an update on the bridge, but I want to back up a second on the connectivity of the bridge. Which bridge were you talking about?
Well, I was, I guess, speaking of the old one, but I would think people coming from the park to. Into town would be accessing through the vehicle bridge.
Yeah, because I came through Saturday, this kind of a side note, but I came, I was leaving town Saturday. And there's two people with launchers fishing off main bridge, the new bridge. So. Very dangerous. If I hadn't been driving, I'd have been taking pictures of it, but I was just, I was floored when I went across there and seen them. They're just. Sitting there, got the coolers next to them and they're just fishing away over the ridge. So. I did. Nate was coming through town today, so he met me down there at the bridge and we looked at it. He really wants more done to close that bridge because of the structure. He is going to put up a or write up a. Some kind of report for the next meeting. I'll have some stuff on what I've been able to collect on prices. On a bridge. But he's really concerned about you, and you could tell there's a path right through there. We were out there. Two weeks ago and the gate was unwired, wired up again, but you know, you can go around the ends. There's, there's a path right around the orange fence, right? Bridge, and it's not our path. So. I guess that's kind of it in a nutshell. It's, they got a name for it. It's an attractive nuisance, I think they call it. But, so. He's, he's really concerned about it and I don't want to stick words in his mouth, but he pretty much said I could say that, so. And then after seeing people fishing off that new bridge and the amount of traffic that comes down that hill. And I don't know where we stand with county. If you want me to go to the county, I'm more than happy to, because like I told everybody to begin with, I'm not going to forget this. I'm not going to drop. I, I kind of know where their stand is on it as far as. Wanting out of it, but.
Has there been any dive on it yet?
We were going to do it Labor Day weekend, Sunday. But I didn't realize there's a bunch of rain. We had all set up. The engineer was coming down earlier, but there was a bunch of rain up north and that came up. I don't even remember when it crashed. Because if we were measuring, it came up over foot and there was already about eight, ten inches going over the dam.
I was down there Sunday and the water is really low right now.
Yeah, I, I actually measured it. It's, it's still up from what it was. I, I hard measure it right off the bridge with the tape measure. So I can really keep track of it. It's, it's dropped considerably, so. Right now, we're shooting for the twenty fourth or the twenty fifth. Because of everybody's schedule.
I'd really be curious to see what's going on down there.
So, and, and, and the, the stones have moved. They're still migrating. The, the very top stone now is delaminated about an inch from the bottom. So now it's got an easier path to slide on itself and it's moving and I, I, I really think the. I don't know what you call the very top, kind of a paver stone, this I think kind of has that wedge with, with that shrub that's there. That one goes and Nate's, I believe in agreement, that one goes, the top five are going to be gone. And he's really concerned they won't even make it through the winter.
A while back, you talked about a, a bringing a cable around here to kind of stabilize that. Is, is that still an option?
My opinion, probably not. And we kind of talked about that day and, and we talked about that again. One of my concerns is if, if we come over the top of that and try to table down. If, if the top does collapse, you know, we'll let people pull everything out. We, we kind of come up with an idea to try to tie them. But pinning them is probably going to be one of the better and then.
Well, this wasn't a good year for that bridge because of all the rain we got either.
So, yeah, it's, you know, like you said, it's. He's going to have some kind of report for the next meeting, he said.
Okay.
And then I'll have some stuff printed off the, the companies from Michigan that I've been dealing with. Just kind of give an idea. They kind of backed up on some of the stuff, so. And I'll give you what they got for me, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Thirteen point zero, adjournment, meeting is adjourned.